In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted December 11th, 2013, one at all schools, two home news tribune, three Cranberry Press, four filed with the Clerk of the municipality. At this time, I'm going to add something to the agenda because we would like to acknowledge two of our retiring board members this evening, so we're going to give them plaques. So I'm going to ask Mr. Masters to please come to the microphone with me.
Oh.
Well, that's the only one I think that we have. You'll have to come back and get this one. Tonight Lou Masters and Ira Tesler will be having their last days as Board of Education members. And I've asked them to, we're going to give them plaques, but I've asked them to put together some of the topics that, or the things that they have done that they're very proud of. This thing is going to go around and around. Okay. So the plaque reads as follows, "Presented to Mr. Louis C. Masters in sincere appreciation for dedicated service to the students and schools of Monroe Township while serving as a board member of the Monroe Township Board of Education from 2010 to 2013." So first, I'd like to give you this. And then Lou, while he's been a board member, he has been the Board of Education rep to the Middlesex Regional Ed Services Commission, the Board delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association from 2011 to 2013. He's been a member of the Ad Hoc Committee on Growth and Facilities and participated on strategic planning committees. He's assisted with planning of the high school and middle school transitions. He's been an advocate for continuing district technology updates. As the Chair for BGNT, Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation, he's facilitated multiple facilities upgrades, including several roof projects, all under the operating budget. He fought against pay to participate. He fought to bring back courtesy busing. He fought for additional water and air quality testing in schools. He's been a big proponent for the Applegarth Elementary Facility upgrades, championed the high school artistic classroom, and increased special education funding. He's been an advocate for security upgrades. He's been a member of the Board that facilitated over $17 million in budget efficiencies. He's been a big supporter of MECA and has fought to ensure pink slime was completely removed and prohibited from our lunch program. And he has also been known to add a little spice to the occasional board gathering. So I'd like to congratulate you, and you've done a great job. We've had an opportunity to see one of your babies being born and having your family grow, and it's been an honor to work with you as a member of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
(applause) Ira Tesler. His plaque reads as follows, "Presented to Mr. Ira Tesler in sincere appreciation for dedicated service to the students and schools of Monroe Township while serving as a board member of the Monroe Township Board of Education from 2007 to 2013." So let me handle this. You're welcome. And he has had, obviously, many of the same accomplishments that Mr. Masters has had, but he's also added that he's proud of the opening of the Oak Tree School, which is on time and under budget, the approval and the construction of the new high school, on time and under budget, the renovations to Applegarth School, including air and water testing, the hiring of a new superintendent, the hiring of a new business administrator, new programs in our district, which include special education, Falcon Life, and Avid, the overall increase on standardized test scores, two successful negotiations with our bargaining units, the last one with no increase to our budget. He fought to bring back after-school busing two days a week and fought against pay to participate. He's been an advocate for the iPad program in the high school. He has supported MECA and the kindergarten enrichment program. He's chaired the Community Relations Committee. He's chaired the Personnel Committee, and the past year, he's been the Vice President of Board of Education. And Ira has shown his love of reading to our board meeting, which we have all appreciated this past year. So Ira, we, you know, we will miss you, and we wish you and Lou the best of luck in your future. Thank you. (applause) Would you like to say something? Lou?
You want to say something first? You were first.
No, you can go first.
All right. I'll go first.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank my family, my wife and my three daughters, Amanda, Rebecca, and Ally, for supporting me these past just about seven years on the Board of Education. You know, sometimes it was tough when I missed some event or activity of my kids because Daddy had to go to a board meeting or a committee meeting. And I, kudos to my wife for having to slept three kids through all their activities on their own sometimes when I wasn't available to help her out. I surely like to thank my fellow board members over the years. It was an honor working with you over the past seven years. I'd like to thank the administration, the two administrations I've worked with, Dr. Ferry and Wayne Holliday, wherever you are, Dr. Hamilton, Dr. Gorman, Mike Gorski, our current administration here today. I surely also like to thank the rest of the staff I've worked with over the years, all the teachers that change and influence the children's lives every day and have to deal with my kids too, who sometimes aren't the easiest kids to deal with over the years. And I'd just like to say that I will continue to be an advocate for public education. I believe in the public education system. I believe our kids deserve better. Over the years, when I grew up, my father had a retail store, my mother was a stay-at-home mom, and my father was pulled out of high school to fight in World War II. He didn't go to college, my mother didn't go to college, and A-1 did better for me. So they got, I attended college, I went to Rutgers University, I went to NJIT, I got my masters in computer science. So we all want better for our kids, and that's what I think we can, we need to continue to push for in this town in the United States of America, better for our kids, better education for our kids, not taking away things just to save a dollar. We need to make sure we have programs in the arts and the sciences and not say we're not going to run class just because there's not enough kids to support it or take, or bring back pay to participate and have an unfair tax on our students just because they choose to participate in a co-curricular or athletic activity. So I think all our kids deserve better, and I will continue to do what I can out there in the audience now to promote that. And I guess somebody out there, make sure you save me a seat on the couch in the media center over the high school next month. Thank you very much, and it's an honor. I hope everybody has a happy holiday, whatever you celebrate, happy belated Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, and have a healthy and happy New Year.
Mr. Masters, would you like to, or Lou, I'm going to call you Lou tonight.
You can, in several hours.
Okay.
Ira stole most of my thunder, I'm not going to reiterate. He has a lot of really good points, and we did run together, and I agree with him 99%.
Would you like me to read what you're saying for you?
It's like the Oscars, I got to make sure I thank every person, or I'm going to be in a lot of trouble when I go home, meaning wife. Again, like Ira said, I'm very proud of what I did here, and I don't really regret any decisions I made except for, I guess, the middle school signs paint scheme, which I did offer to pay for out of my own pocket because it was a bad decision, but Jerry found some paint somewhere and he actually fixed it before I could, even though I think it doesn't use new whiteboard. We should put it on the next Buildings and Grounds.
Are you still paying for it?
I don't know. Is it a 60 lot that we can't get anymore? Those are being bad. But it really is, and Ira said, it's something you've got to love to do, and it is something I really, really loved. I want to thank all the administrators, they make it a lot easier to do this job. The staff too, the teachers are wonderful, best teachers around. I have kids in the system, and I constantly find myself in awe of what they do and with whatever they have and the dedication they have. The students too, I'm amazed at the programs we see and the students are doing here, really turning some things around, which is a testament to the teachers and the administration and the Board of Ed, also the board members. I think I've learned something from every board member. I think I've fought with every board member here, and I'm not really sorry about that, I think it was good. I will apologize if any feelings got hurt, that's okay. You know, and I was thinking about, the number one question I get, sometimes people recognize down the street, is why would you do that? You know, a lot of us will say, why would you do that? You sit there and get yelled at for two hours, or, you know, your friends stop talking to you because you didn't vote for something, or you did vote for something, or it's not enough. And the answer we say, it's the easiest answer, but it's also kind of a cop-out, is it's worth it. It's plain and simple, it's worth it. All this is worth it, the kids are worth it, and I don't regret any of it. I don't ask for any of my time back. I want to thank my kids, because a lot of times, they would come over and ask me why I was going out all the time, I had a lot of committee meetings and a lot of other issues I had to go to. And I would just tell them, Daddy's going to try to fix some things or do some good. My wife, she puts up a lot of the stuff, like Ira was saying, all those meetings and stuff like that, but I have a bit of a cold. And if anybody knows me, I will, I languish over decisions. So she had to put up with a lot of that because I couldn't tell what most of them were. So she would just see me on the phone or, she says I pull my eyebrows out of my head when I'm nervous or I'm thinking about stuff, and she'd come in.
When you were done with your hair.
When I'm done, I have no hair to pull out, like she would say, but I would, I'd come in and I'd have almost a half of a bald eyebrow because I've been sitting there thinking about something all day to do with the Board of Ed. But she's always been there, and like Ira said, she's pretty much carried most of the weight, she's done all the hard work. I think that's about it. One more thing, I always think, if you've read Dickens, there's a really good quote towards the end, it's actually a very negative quote, but it also is very positive if you think about it. It's basically, it's a far, far better thing we do than we've ever done before, and I try to apply that to what I do in life, that you always move forward and you try to do something better. So thank you, everybody, I'm glad you gave me the chance to do this, and like I said, I'll be around, don't worry.
And being the nerd I am, that's the end of Star Trek II: Wrath of Khan, quoted by Captain Kirk.
Does any other board members want to make a comment? Mr. Chiarella, I'm going to not be able to know who you are tonight because I can't see.
Oh, sorry. Well, I just wanted to, I just want to thank Lou and Ira for their service to our community and to our children. I think that the work that you guys have done, the partnership that you've created, and yeah, we don't always get along, we don't always agree, but that's not what, you know, what's really important. What's really important is that I always knew what your best intentions were, and I always knew that your best intentions were to do what, do the right thing for the kids. So we may not have always agreed on how to get there, but I always knew that it was about doing the right thing for the kids and for the educational process. So I just want to, I just want to thank you both for that, and you guys have become personal friends. I talk to Lou probably more than I speak to my wife these days, between committee meetings, phone calls, and things like that, but, and that's not going to go away. So I just want you guys to know that I do appreciate your service and thank you for everything.
Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman.
I'm just going to take a moment of your time, and maybe I'll make it very relatable. I know most of you that are here tonight are not here for any of this, and I know most of you here tonight have no clue who we are and what we do and why we do what we do. And every now and then, if you're too slow on the channel surfing button and you pause too long on Channel 28, you may find out who we are and what we do. But I just want to let everybody here know why this is equally more difficult for me tonight, besides being personal friends and going through the trenches with these guys here, especially Ira, those ridiculous meetings that we had to do to build the new high school, you have no idea because it was never on film, God, thank God for that. What you are losing tonight are two representatives that had children in the schools. That's very important, because having had kids in the district and not having them here anymore, there's a little bit of a disconnect once your kids graduate and they move on with their lives. You're not in touch, as they were talking about before, about the day-to-day, and that's pretty significant here, and I hope that's a wake-up call for some of you that are here, because your representation has been halved. You used to have four representatives that had kids in the district, and now you have two. So that's pretty significant. And if you enjoy the things that you like, that's not to say anything derogatively of the new board members that are coming in, it's just a point of fact. You have two board members that have kids in the district and two new ones that are coming in that don't have it. Just keep that in mind. We are trying to do our very best to make sure that we squeeze a dollar one out of every dollar we collect. I mean, in a perfect world, that'd be great to do, but it really doesn't happen that way. But we do really try and work hard for you, and it is just an equally sad day because I'm losing these two friends, and you, as a collective, are losing a little bit of representation. So again, I applaud these gentlemen for putting in the time and effort that we do tirelessly. I personally, not like them, I'm in this only for the money. You know, because that's just who I am and how I roll. Mr. Klein, I think, I see him nodding over there, he was equally in it for the money as well. So thank you for your time and attention, and that's all I got.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we will go to our student board members' reports.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At Berkeley Brook School, students have the opportunity to attend an exciting assembly earlier this month where they learned about the importance of recycling. This assembly was free for the school, and it was sponsored by Middlesex County Clean Communities. During the month of December, they are holding their second annual Pennies for Patients fundraiser. Money raised will be donated to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The drive began with an assembly that had a number of fun events to raise money throughout the month. To date, they have raised over $2,000. First-grade students also participated in holidays around the world. Each first-grade teacher selected a country and taught the students about the holidays celebrated in that country. Students created suitcases and passports which they took to each home, no, they took to each country, sorry. They stored their souvenirs in their suitcases, and when they returned home, they stamped their passports with the country they visited. The learning will accumulate on Friday, as well as all first graders will come together and sing "It's a Small World." It has been a busy month at Woodland School. In addition to classroom instruction and parent-teacher conferences, they have been busy, busy supporting the local community, collecting food and clothing for families in need. They've also created holiday poppers full of candy to give children as they get a warm holiday meal in an effort to bring them some holiday cheer.
At Oak Tree School, on November 14th, they hosted the Second Family Reading Night called "Give Thanks for Reading." Over 500 people attended, and stories were read by staff. Staff also dressed up as storybook characters. There was a book swap at the Read Box, and centers were set up in the gym to promote a love for literacy. At Monroe Township High School, the Toys for Tots fundraiser has been going on. Students were encouraged to bring in new toys for underprivileged children. This program was run by the avid students. This year's Challenge Day was a success. Challenge Day is when groups of students get together and practice team-building along with self-esteem building activities. The purpose of Challenge Day was to provide students with programs that demonstrate the possibility of love and connection through the celebration of diversity, truth, and full expression. Winter break begins Monday, December 23rd, and school reopens on Thursday, January 2nd.
Thank you very much. This time, I'm going to turn over the next two agenda items to Dr. Hamilton.
Okay. This, good evening all. This evening, we are very proud to present awards to our marching band and color guards. Tonight, we honor and recognize our marching band and color guards for winning the national championship title, which occurred on Saturday, November 9th, under the direction of Mr. Marty Griffin. If I could get a copy of, Greg, if you can give me a plaque that I can just read the inscription for the record, I'll share the inscription, and then I will ask Mr. Byer if he would help in distributing the plaques. But the plaque reads, Monroe Township High School Marching Band and Color Guard, 2013. List the names of our band director, band directors, instructional staff, or drum majors, and the members of the band and color guards. And it reads, "The U.S. Band Group II-A State and National Championships," so please join me in congratulating our students. This recognition is particularly important because often what gets overlooked with this particular group is the incredible sacrifice these students make with their practices and competitions that are scheduled, and oftentimes, this commitment requires them to forego sometimes family vacations and holidays when other kids are enjoying the time off from school. These youngsters are on the field with their advisors, and I just want you to know how much we appreciate your service. So Mr. Byers, if you could assist with distributing the plaques.
(laughter) It'd be light. Yeah, I know, it's like, it's like a supernova.
What we're going to do is, is call each student's name. I know we have most of the kids here, hi Andrew, and I know some couldn't make it, but when we call your name, please come forward and accept your plaque. We're going to start with our two drum majors, Rebecca Eisenberg (applause) and Adam Gensell. These are alphabetical the rest of the way, so. Skylar Adams. Allison Aitken. Austin Aitken. Kayla Harbertson. Ashley Cooperman. Nick Di Pietro. Christie Pietro. Eric Evans. Cameron Fuller. Maggie Hansick. Dan Hammer. Kritik Jane. Mitchell Joseph. Brianna LaRusa. Andrew McCabe. Corinne Mulrain. Cheyenne Mulrain. Sean Nagpaw. Donnie Owen. Gabby Pacico. Sam Paguio. Shane Palmer. Gregory Puch. Stephen Quinn. Jaclyn Quinn. Shrika Reddy. Jamie Roth. Carolyn Russo. Quentin Schimmel. Caitlin Samoskowitz. Heather Simpson. Bridget Slomane. Bonnie Wang. Jason Weinthal. Jessica Williams. And Rachel Zuckermin. Before these guys take a seat, I do want to thank Dr. Hamilton, Board of Education. We do tell these kids often during the season that they are lucky to be in Monroe, because this board does support not just marching, but the arts in general, and we all know that the best kids are the art and music kids. So, don't forget that. So thank you again, you're Group II Champions. So, thank you again, your Group II champions. One time around, you ought to. But wait, guys, before you leave, join me in thanking your band directors, Mr. Marty Griffin and Mr. Alfred Haddon. Now, there is a group picture that was taken at the competition that we have not received yet. When we receive that group picture, we're having another plaque created that will be mounted in the hall here at the high, well, across the street at the high school.
I just want to congratulate from the Board of Education, the marching band, as a parent of a former band member going back to 1996. I've seen how much this band has grown and what they can do, and I'm very proud of your accomplishments. So, congratulations again. I know Mr. Kaufman has a few words to say.
Yeah, real quickly, I know there's a lot of noise in the room, but in addition to all the incredible amount of time that it takes to achieve an accomplishment like this, I also want to take the time and effort to really thank the parents. And where are the pit crew parents? Are you here? Okay. See, see, there is no way I would let this band leave here without me talking about that disconnect I said before. When my sons left, they were both on the drum line, and I was at every competition because I was a proud member of that fabulous pit crew back in the day. And now I'm catching a cold. The only thing that made me, I guess, more nervous than anything else was that hill at Allentown, because back in the day, you can't imagine the amount of equipment that we had when it was a Group V band. So, I just want to thank the parents and the kids. This is an unbelievable accomplishment. Thanks.
Mr. Chiarella, I know that you.
Yes.
It's okay. You know, my son, I have to tell you, my, that last year, I told Marty, after my youngest graduated, I might come back next year. And I went home and I told my youngest about that, and he had one word for me, and that was creepy. So, I knew it was time to toss my hat and then let the next generation take over.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just want to just take a minute. I just want to tell you guys how incredibly proud I am of all of you. I think this is an incredible, incredible, just an achievement that we're going to, we're going to know and think about, feel for a long time. And I just want you to understand, because I know sometimes sports and other programs overshadow what you guys do, but let me tell you something. In my opinion, when you go to a football game or you're even to a movie, right? Imagine a movie without music, but imagine that a football game without you guys. When you feel those chills, when the spectators feel that adrenaline, when they, when they feel that team spirit, that's coming from your music. And that's something that I think people overlook, but that's where that comes from. When you're sitting there and you're getting chills, that's because you guys give it to us. So, just thank you for that achievement. Thank you to the parents. Thank you to the directors. I think you guys have just done something fabulous here, and I'm going to remember this for a long time.
At this time, we have a special presentation. Each month, a different principal or a different school hosts, provides a presentation to the board, just to kind of highlight some of the things that are going on at the school level. And this month is the middle school's opportunity to present. So, Mrs. Chanley, if you would set us up and let us know what we're getting ready to see. I guess you do.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. And I would like to just take a very, very brief 30, 60 second opportunity to let you know that rather than do a PowerPoint and try and merge all the wonderful things we do here in the middle school, we thought it would be an excellent opportunity to showcase a group of students that are our sixth graders. And as you know, three years ago, we came together as a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade building, and we stopped and said, "How do we make this about the whole child?" Well, this evening, you'll have a opportunity, an opportunity to truly see these children and how we embrace them so that it's not just the academics, which is a major important part, but it's also the social and emotional piece. So, without any further ado, we have our wonderful, fabulous, sixth grade, Little Play Mickey Mouse kids.
Oh, that's what this is.
If I can inconvenience everybody to move out of the aisle, the children will be coming down the aisle.
I think we're okay here. Sorry. You're okay here?
I think so. You might be able to see a little bit better if you want to be in the first row. What if you come?
Oh, now I believe in looking like my time honored this cooking, whether polka dot is striped or even checked. With some glamour guaranteeing, every fiber of my being is displayed to quite remarkable effect. From your cradle via true soul to your deathbed, you're on view so never compromise except no substitute. I would rather wear a barrel than conservative apparel, for dress has always been my strongest suit.
Overwear. Underwear. Anytime. Anywhere. Staying in or hitting downward from the top and working downward. I ensure that every stitch is stitched in time. Whether wig or hat or turban, whether club or urban, not to strike yourself outrageously a crime. And the few who are invited to my wardrobe are delighted as they wandered through my things to find in rude. That in negligee or formal, I am anything but normal. For dress has always been my strongest. Overwear. Underwear. Anytime. Anywhere. Overwear. Underwear. Anytime. Anywhere. Oh, dress has always been my. Dress has always been my. Dress has always been my strongest suit.
Hey, Chiarella.
Hey.
Is that a new fur coat?
My only true love darling, I live for furs. I worship furs. After all, is there a woman in all this wretched world who doesn't?
Me! My name is Ariel, and I'm a member of PETA. I just opened up a shelter for battered shrimp.
Ugh! I bet 1021, a shrimp coat would stink.
Chairman Mouselle, it is its deepest pride and greatest pleasures that we welcome you here tonight. And now, we invite you to relax. Let us pull up a chair as the dining room party presents. Yovene. Be our guest. Be our guest. Put our service to the test. Tie your napkin around your neck shabby, and we'll provide the rest. Soup du jour, hat de veste, oh, we only live to serve. Try the gray stuff. Don't believe me? Ask the dishes. They can sing, they can dance. After all, this, this is France. And the dinner here is never second best. Go on and fold your menu, take a glance, and then you'll be our guest. We our guest. Be our guest. And now, presenting, Yovene.
Be our guest. Be our guest. Get your worries off your chest. Let us say for your entree, we've an array. May we suggest, try the bread, try the soup, and the cruises. It's a treat for any diner. Don't believe me? Ask the china, singing pork, dancing veal. What an entertaining meal. How could anyone be gloomy or depressed? We'll make you shout a chorus and a symphony. So be our guest. Be our guest. Be our guest. Course by course, one by one, till you shout, "Enough, I'm done!" Then we'll sing you off to sleep as you digest. Tonight, you'll froth your feet up, but for now, let PETA be our guest. Be our guest. Be our guest. Please be our guest.
What does Winnie the Pooh walk on?
His bare feet.
What's Winnie the Pooh's favorite TV show?
Honey Boo Boo.
Look for the bare necessities, the simple bare necessities. Forget about your worries and your strife. I mean, the bare necessities are Mother Nature's recipes that bring the bare necessities of life. Wherever I wander, wherever I roam, I could be fonder of my big home. The bees are buzzing in the trees to make some honey just for me. When you look under the rocks and plants and take a glance at the fancy ants, then maybe try a few. The bare necessities of life will come to you. They'll come to you. Look for the bare necessities, the simple bare necessities. Forget about your worries and your strife. I mean, the bare necessities are Mother Nature's recipes that bring the bare necessities of life. So just try to relax, oh yeah, in my backyard. If you act like a p-act, you're working too hard. Don't spend your time just looking around for something you want that can't be found. When you find out you can live without it and go along, not thinking about it, I'll tell you something true. The bare necessities of life will come to you. They'll come to you. They'll come to you.
Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always supercocious.
Umtililulumtilai. 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 Umtililulumtilai.
When Stone Age men were chatting, simply bumped in words of fight.
Oh, if they'd heard this word, they might have used it once or twice.
I'm sure Egyptian pharaohs would have crossed it in a jiff.
Then every single pyramid would bear this hieroglyph.
Oh, supercalifragilisticexpialidocious. Said animal animals will not seem so ferocious. As some fellow flourish, it's so racococious. Umtililulumtilai. 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 If you say it softly, that can be hypotocious. Check your breath before you speak in case it's halitocious. Umtililulumtilai. 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 Umtililulumtilai.
So when the cat has got your tongue, there's no need for dismay. Just summon up this word, and then you've got a lot to say.
Pick out those eighteen consonants and add sixteen vowels as well.
And put them in an order which is very hard to spell. S U P E R C A L I F R A G I L. I S T A C E X P I A L I D O C I O U S. S U P E R C A L I F R A G I L. I S T A C E X P I A L I D O C I O U S. S U P E R C A L I F R A G I L. I S T A C E X P I A L I D O C I O U S. Even though the sound of it is something quite atrocious. If you say it loud enough, you'll always supercocious. Supercalifragilistic. Supercalifragilistic.
Yesterday, we all were on our own road. We didn't really know that each of us brings something to the table to help the others grow. Now's your chance to take a new direction, to see through other eyes. To make a choice, to make a new connection, to win the bigger prize. We're all in this together. Once we know that we are, we're our stars. And we see that we're all in this together. And it shows when we stand hand in hand, make our dreams come true.
We're all here and speaking out with one voice. We're gonna rock the house. Ooh wah, ooh wah.
Ooh wah, ooh wah.
Hey, hey, hey.
Woo!
We've arrived because we suck together. We make each other strong.
Together's where we belong. We're all in this together. Winds we reach, we can fly. No insight, we can make it. We're all in this together. Once we see there's a chance that we have and we take it. Together, 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 everyone. Together, together. Come on, let's have some fun. Valuettes everywhere, wave your hands up in the air. That's the way we do it, let's get to it. Come on, everyone.
Well, folks, that's the end of our show. I hope you all remember to wish upon a star every now and then. As my old friend Jiminy Cricket once told me, if your heart is in your dream, no request is too extreme. Have a magical night and don't forget to live happily ever after.
Hey, wait, we oughta give these folks a proper Disney goodbye.
Well, what do you have in mind? I'm all yours.
Mickey Mouse Club, Mickey Mouse Club, Mickey Mouse Club, Mickey Mouse Club. Now it's time to say goodbye to all our company. M.I.C.
See you real soon.
K.E.Y.
Why? Because we like you.
Testing, testing.
Hello?
Okay, we're up.
Thank you, Shari, Mrs. Chanley, students, accompanists, teachers, advisors. Very, very nice. Nice change of pace.
Mr. Masters, this is why we do what we do. We could be looking at the next American Idol or Rocket on Broadway.
Kathy.
Mr. Tesler?
Yeah. Just like Mr. Kaufman was a bad parent, my oldest daughter did for theater in middle school, all up the high schools, so I'm a drama parent. I'd like to thank you to Janet Kaufman, Joyce, Mr. Lorenzo for doing wonderful things with middle school in Applegarth. My daughter got her start in her theater career in school in seventh grade when she did High School Musical and went up to do over 11 shows. And it's just a wonderful experience for the kids and it just goes to show you how important the arts are as well as the academics. So I just, again, thank you for all you've done and I appreciate it. One little story just to show how committed these kids are to the arts. Back in when my daughter was in 11th grade, it was the first year the high school was doing the murder mystery theater. And the week before, I know Ms. Kaufman calls it tech week, tech week, the kids in the high school call it hell week, but it's where they, you know, practice every day, usually for eight, nine hours a day. And the night before opening day, there was a snowstorm and the kids couldn't have their last rehearsal right before opening night because there was early dismissal and there was no after-school activities. So my daughter was all frantic and the kids were all frantic. And all the kids on the show ended up coming to my house. I fed them pizza and soda and they practiced the entire show in my basement. And even the director, Mr. Burns, came to my house and helped them. So that's how committed these kids are and wonderful these kids are. It was just a memory I just wanted to share. So congratulations, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing no one, I think we are going to number eight on the agenda, the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Chrissy Skirby, 8 Samuel Court. I just had a question under the board action residency contract. I know I ask at every meeting, Dr. Hamilton. I'm just curious if, how many students are enrolled who do not currently live in the township?
Since last month, we have one. Actually, it's not even a new student, it's an extension of a previous one. So I think we're about 11 now.
Oh, okay. Have we been, we're not seeing any increase with the building?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay. Do you have any idea how that may affect going into next year?
I don't. I have information from the township regarding potential closing dates on properties, but that still doesn't tell me how many kids will be there. So I don't have that information.
Okay. And then, something not on the agenda. On behalf of the Oak Tree Applegarth PTA, we would like to also wish Mr. Masters and Mr. Tesler the very best. Lou has been an incredible, incredible help at our schools. He's part of our executive board on the PTA. He has been dedicated to doing the best for our students. And I hope Ira and Lou, I hope you will run again for the board because what you've done in this community has been amazing for the students. And your heart is really where it should be for providing the best for our students. So again, thank you for your service to our community. Our children do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Real quick, Umfer Klimt. Did I get that right, Amy? Awesome talent out there and thank you. I want to thank.
Lou, please give your name.
Karen Castaldo, I apologize. MTA president. A lot of people don't know what goes on behind the scenes. As Lou had shared and on behalf of MTA, we also extend our best wishes to both Lou and Ira for the great work that they have done and all the support that they have given us through the years. Just a month ago, I happened to be at a very wonderful meeting with Dr. Hamilton and Ms. Shari Chanley doing a sidebar for what you just saw up there for the sixth grade play. Something like that made all of this happen. So I thank everybody for all of your support and best of luck, gentlemen. Run again.
Michelle Arminio, 9 Nathaniel Street. I'd like to also thank Mr. Tesler and Mr. Masters for their service to this community. Oh, sincerely, thank you very much. I've been coming to meetings a lot and I know that you have given countless hours of dedication to programs. Thank you very much. As a citizen and taxpayer and a believer in the quality of public education, I thank you for your service.
I'm just gonna break a rule. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, okay. And the theme of these lovely voices of these wonderful children, I would like to thank the teachers, the accompanists and the school for providing this opportunity for us to see the talents and the loveliness of the children. But again, with their lovely voices, I'd like to point out that they said each one of us brings something to the table. We're all in this together and that we're different in a good way. So with that lovely feeling and warm feeling that they brought, I'm a little bit disappointed that Mr. Kaufman, a sitting board member, made comments that he did. It's a little disappointing. So I hope we recognize us bringing something to the table when we get on board. On the agenda, there is a closed session hearing and then a MTAA contract, I believe, that's going to be either voted on or discussed. Okay. In some of my research before I get on the board, I noticed that the School Board Association talks about a lame duck session. And I'd just like to point out a few things about it and ask for your comments. It says that the School Board Association recommends that a lame duck concerns the usurping of the authority of the successor board and for significant decisions made immediately prior to the January organization meeting. So I would like to know if it is appropriate for the current sitting board to make a decision on a contract that will be, the contract will be from June 30th, 2014 to July 17th, which would go the length of the next term, the term beginning January 2nd. So I would like to understand the appropriateness of having that discussion and vote this evening.
And actually, our attorney is here with us this evening, so I'm going to defer that question to her. Ms. Lordy?
You want to use this?
You can sit here.
Up here now, there's room.
Yeah, sure.
I think you raised a very important question. And I think it is a subject matter as to which my colleagues at the School Boards Association and the legal department have commented from time to time, as have the courts. I took a look at the materials that addressed this issue that were raised this afternoon with Mr. Gorski by you. And what I did was we went to the source of the material and that is the NOAC case that's referenced there. Because I wanted to see what it said. Because what it did, the assertion appeared to me to be out of keeping the part that's relevant, I think, ma'am. And the law's clear, the commissioner said, that in this state, a board of education is a non-continuous body that may legally obligate its successor only in such ways as provided by statute. The relevant statute here is the PERC Act. And the law is similarly clear that a board may, indeed is now obligated, to enter into negotiation sessions with which, if successful, may be finalized prior to the time of its successor board's organization meeting. So what that tells us is that under the PERC Act, it's really, we call it by shorthand the PERC Act, but it's the New Jersey Employer-Employee Relations Act. That under that law, or in other words statute, the board does have the authority to finalize the product of its negotiations with the body. So there is the authority to do it if the board wishes to do so. So I hope that at least provides the legal piece of the response.
Okay, but it also says a board should not, should not put into a budget that, which this body is really not budgeting for their own budget, they're budgeting for the budget of the future board, the successor board.
As every, as every board does when it handles budget matters. But with respect to the approval of a memorandum of agreement that goes to collective negotiations, what the NOAC case tells us is that under the PERC Act, there's an obligation to engage in negotiations and then there is the authority to move forward to approve a memorandum of agreement, which essentially is approving a proposed agreement. That's just what the court says.
But specifically, the NOAC case, it was a case with the incumbents. The decision was not, the end of the decision, they weren't happy with the way the board responded, but because they allowed the petition not to be, they voided the petition because the incumbents were the same people who were voting prior to the successor board. So I think it's different in this case. They're obliga, excuse me, let me just, they're obligating the successor board to a budgetary item that is not in their purview as far as I could see.
I understand your perspective on this, but I think that the NOAC case is pretty clear in articulating what is not a new legal principle. And I speak to you not as a matter of policy or in terms of making a business decision, but rather what the law will permit. And in my view, my very studied view, I think the NOAC case is clear in terms of its articulation of, an explanation of the rules set forth in the Employer-Employee Relations Act.
Okay. Because it also says that in such matters, it is important that the board of education to avoid the very appearance of non-compliance. So what I would ask you is if this is not a significant enough matter to bring to the next successor board, what would be example of, this is sort of important.
I know, but I have to be fair to everybody.
I think I gave it initially and that is with respect to seeking to appoint someone now as, for a vacancy, that wouldn't occur until July 1, for example. That would be something this board would not act on. I think under the PERC Act, it has, it has the authority to act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Hello, everyone. Patrice Feroni, 81 Pergola Avenue, Monroe Township. First time I've ever said that in my life. I just want to congratulate Mr. Kaufman, Michelle and Tom for their election wins and wish you all the best of luck. It's not an easy road and you'll learn that as you go along. I do want to say to Ira and Lou, I've known you both, Ira, I've known you 17 years. I was the Monroe rep for 17 years. Both of you are equally passionate and dedicated and hardworking. It's not always easy to sit in the audience and understand what goes on from this perspective. We've made, you've made, I've made, we've all made some very difficult decisions that weren't always understood by the public because they didn't see what went beyond, behind the scenes. I just want to thank you both for your dedication to the Jamesburg and Monroe students from K to 12. I wish you the best of luck. And the day that Joe Homoki lost, I said, sometimes people get what they deserve and when they vote people out for agendas that they don't really understand themselves, you have to live with those consequences. But I wish everybody the best of luck and I miss all of you. And I just wanted to come up and thank all of you for your service and happy healthy New Year.
And we understand that you're running for the Monroe board next year.
Robert Roach, 18 Muirfield Boulevard, Monroe. In all due respect to your legal opinion, I don't know that there's any particular requirement that the board act tonight on that contract.
That is correct, sir. I did not indicate that there is a requirement. What I said is that the board may do so, sir.
I understand that. So I think for the sake of transparency, for the sake of letting the new board members that are coming on January 2nd to be involved in this process, I think it just shows, for the board to go tonight and go through this process, I think it shows that they're not very open to new members. Especially in Lou, Mr. Kaufman's derogatory comments. In five years going to board members, I've never seen anybody so demeaning. The second, and since, I almost want to be demeaning, but I'm going to try not to be. One of the items on the board agenda is the nepotism policy. At the policy meeting last evening, Monday evening rather, there was a discussion about the nepotism policy, about extending the, from six months to one year. Former board members before a relative or employee, relative could be employed by the board. First of all, I think, and it talks about, talked about how many people were involved in that policy. I think that policy is very, very limited and I don't think it should, I think it should be expanded and to include many more people. I just want to point out to the board that there is an advisory opinion. I just want to point out to the board that there is an advisory opinion by the School Ethics Commission, which indicates that. And this is far as voting on this nepotism policy this evening. Says under New Jersey State Act 18A, double colon, the 12 dash 24C, "No school official shall act in his official capacity in any matter where he, a member of his immediate family or a business organization in which he has an interest, has a direct or indirect financial or personal involvement that might reasonably be expected to impair his objectivity and independence of judgment." The Supreme Court stated in Wazowski versus Rias... I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right, but you probably know which one I'm referring to. Says, "The question will always be whether the circumstances could reasonably be interpreted to show that they had a likely capacity to tempt the official to depart from the sworn duty." I'm asking and recommending that anyone who may fit into this category, who is leaving this board January 2nd, not vote on the nepotism policy.
Thank you.
I didn't name you.
Nelson Chan, 4 Ashley Court. On page 13, item I, the AP 3D art. How many students are enrolled in that?
I can look it up for you. I think it's three or four.
Three or four students? So you're going to vote on a class for three or four students? Is that correct?
I don't understand the question. The class is currently running.
Oh, it is currently running, okay.
That's a curriculum revision. It's a...
Oh, I see. Okay. I just want to comment that I thought Mr. Kaufman's comments earlier were totally inappropriate as to the incoming board members.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Tom Notstein, 15 Nathaniel Street. It's my understanding we're voting on the nepotism policy this evening. Nepotism is something that's very, very important to me. I feel that nepotism is what breaks the trust between the board and the public. I'm an advocate that there should be no nepotism, period. This policy, while an improvement, because basically it looks like, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, President of the Board, we're going from a six months to a year, correct?
That's part of the discussion, yes.
That's basically the only change?
I think there is other changes. Do you have it up?
Yes, yes.
I have to look for my...
The changes are as follows. For a...
Do you want to discuss this during the nepotism thing?
If you wish.
All right. You can answer.
Okay. Beg your pardon. The changes are that a retiring board member... The current law is that they have to wait six months if they were to be recommended by the superintendent of schools for a position within the same district. And this proposed policy extends that to one year. Additionally, it prohibits the superintendent of schools from recommending for employment the relative, as defined by the state under this regulation, for employment within the district for a period of also one year. And finally, it does not exempt substitutes who have gained regular employment from being exempt from this policy. They can continue to be employed as substitutes, but they could not be recommended for employment for that same period, one year. Those are the three proposed changes to this policy.
So in other words, a substitute can't be recommended by the superintendent until after a year. That's not considered they're already employed, and they won't be grandfathered, correct?
A substitute related to a retiring board member, one year, correct?
Again, I feel too that this is definitely not broad enough. I don't understand why we did not include principals, why we did not include administrators, and why we did not include teachers. The municipal, the town council, they have a fantastic nepotism policy. If you're a police officer in Monroe, you cannot have anybody in your family working in Monroe, period. I don't think it's that difficult. It's a common sense type of situation as far as nepotism is concerned. It breaks the trust, and that's what I heard constantly between when I was campaigning, was they don't trust the board. And there's no quicker way to break the trust than having the nepotism policy, where you have to know somebody. I grew up in Jersey City. My sisters went to get a job in the board. The first question, who do you know? Okay? And we know how that turned out in Jersey City. The state is now running their Board of Ed. Okay? So it's a concern. One of the members, I think it was Mr. Masters, brought it up at the policy committee meeting, wanted to know, "Do we have a problem with this?" I guess he wanted to know, "Is this solving a problem?" The question is, and it's been my biggest complaint about the board, is that the board has been reactive. Here, we finally have a policy where it's going to be proactive, where we're saying, "Maybe we don't have a problem now, but we may in the future." So it's imperative that we say, "Let's look ahead. Let's not just solve problems, let's prevent problems." Because it's that lack of transparency to the public that is one of the biggest problems and the biggest way to break that trust. I too was appalled by Mr. Kaufman's remarks tonight, and I want to ensure this public that I represent all children. When I get sworn in on January 2nd, just like all board members that get sworn in, we don't just represent the children of Monroe. We represent all children in the state. Whether or not we have children in the district, whether we have children in the state, we represent the children. And to him to sit there and say, "We don't represent," and that the parents have lost representation, I think is a serious charge, and I really think it's an ethical charge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Zuckerman, Two Country Brook. I'm sure most of you have read my emails, so I'm sure you know what I'm up here to speak about. I want to first thank you for at least recognizing our children, our champions, tonight. That does not go unnoticed. It is unfortunate that most of them have left and their parents have left, because you guys did have the opportunity tonight to go above and beyond just recognizing them. You have the ability to change a policy that treats them unequally, and you all know it's wrong. Why you're deciding not to make that agenda item tonight is beyond me. You took the first 25 minutes of this meeting to recognize two of your own. You changed your agenda to recognize two of your own. Rightfully so. You spent years on the board. You deserve your recognition. These kids work their tails off to get state and national championships. They deserve equal treatment under the policy. And I'm asking you to change the policy tonight, not wait to kick it down the road to January 8th. Well, we are losing representation, despite the rest of the competition. I appreciate Mr. Kaufman. I appreciate Mr. Kaufman pointing out that we are losing representation for people who have students in this building, because I think it's important, particularly on a topic like this, where we need the representation. So I'm asking you tonight to change your agenda. Five minutes of your time. Change a policy that's wrong. Make it equal. Treat our athletes. You were going to charge us $100 as athletes. Thankfully, some of you guys fought against that. But now that they want equal recognition as athletes, you're going to kick it down the road to the next board. It's just wrong. Do the right thing. You have the ability, while at least some of them are still here, to do the right thing. Set an example. Unfortunately, most of them have left. Most of their parents have left. But maybe the rest of them who are here can go home and say, "They changed the policy. You did the right thing." If you're not going to do that, can I at least have your commitment that in the January meeting, in fact, our kids will be treated equal? Can I at least get that verbal tonight? That our kids will be treated equal? Is anyone on the board willing to at least give me that tonight?
I'll give it to you.
Thank you, sir. I noticed this afternoon, I don't really expect much, because you guys didn't even have the courtesy to applaud our children earlier. And I noticed that, and I take notice of that. And I think...
Excuse me, you're out of order. You speak to the chair.
I just want to recognize that this half of the table opted not to at least applaud for our children. So I'm asking tonight, again, will you at least consider adding one agenda item to change the policy?
We could not do that.
But you changed your agenda to recognize two of your own.
It's not an agenda item. The process of changing a policy has to go to the policy committee, and then it goes from the policy committee, if they approve it, to the board, and it has to have two readings for two different months.
Do we have your commitment that that will be on the January meeting, and that we have at least some support at this table?
I can guarantee you that we will bring it to the policy committee. And after the policy committee, if it comes out of the policy...
Not the commitment I was looking for, ma'am, but I appreciate your honesty. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Marion Lester, 44 Avenue I. Page 15, number 3. Could you please explain this woman's function, since we do have a lawyer for the board already, exactly what she's going to be doing?
Mr. Gorski?
Particularly to observe?
Item 3 on the agenda is for a board-certified analyst who, in the cases of litigation, would offer an independent outside opinion on a child's placement for therapy. And although there is no immediate scheduling or need for such a service, it was recommended by council to our special education director to make this appointment so you wouldn't have to be delayed if that need should arise for a board meeting to approve it.
Okay. And I also take issue with Mr. Kaufman's comments tonight. Just because you have children currently in the school system doesn't mean that you care more than other people would about the students in our school system. As a matter of fact, it might prejudice you to vote for programs that your children are in.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak to the agenda?
Hi, Sharon Eak in Two Hampton. It's not regarding the agenda. It's what Mr. for the band parents had spoken about. I just wanted to get some information as to this review policy that has to take place, how long it's going to take, and going into all those committees, how long before we would know something or what meetings it would be addressed at.
According to our bylaws, which we have to follow, any policy change or addition or correction, would have to go through the policy committee. When the new board reorganizes, there will be a new, probably a new committee set. Then after the committee is set, this would be on the agenda for the first meeting. If it comes out of the policy committee, if the committee agrees to this, it would go to the first board, the full board, for a first reading. And if they approve that, then it will go to the second reading the next month. So it probably might not get here for a first reading until maybe February, depending on when the new committees are reorganized.
So it would take two months?
Yes.
And could we have that retroactively?
That would be a discussion that the policy committee would make. We have never done something like that retroactively, but that would be a discussion for the committee.
Okay. And as far as the comments that were made that keep coming up, I think he only spoke the truth when he said that, you know, he had kids, and that's something that stands for the people that are on the board that have kids. It's just a statement of truth, being honest.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? See, no, we're going to close the public forum, and I... Oh. We're not getting to your report yet. I have the approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education meeting of November 13, 2013.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second by Mr. Masters. Are there any additions or corrections? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the approval of the minutes for the closed session meeting of November 13, 2013.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Masters. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Then the minutes have passed. And we'll go to committee reports. Are there any committees that need to report this evening? Mr. Tesler?
Thank you, Madam President. We had a personnel committee the other day. Items discussed were, number one, HR coordinator recommendation. Dr. Hamilton will be recommending, advising the committee of his recommendation for the HR coordinator position later tonight. Number two, Mecca staffing. Dr. Hamilton and, excuse me, Marietta, provided the committee with an update on Mecca staffing. Because of the increased enrollment and the current director is working 12-hour days in order to keep student-staff ratio in compliance with the established guidelines, Dr. Hamilton expressed that he was concerned that she would not continue to be able to perform to maintain this kind of workload. He's requesting to authorize two 3.25-hour powers to work during the high-traffic times, drop-off, and pickup. This will enable the director to flex her days. The recommendation's only temporary. Moving forward, we're going to be using high school students from the senior option program to fulfill these positions, and the committee supported this recommendation. Number three, behavior specialist. 2014-15. Dr. Hamilton advised the committee that he will seek a behavior specialist at the high school and one at the middle school to work specifically with students who may not necessarily be classified youngsters but have demonstrated emotional or behavioral issues which warrants intervention and support. The committee supported this recommendation as well. Staffing to 2014 and 2015. Dr. Hamilton advised the committee of the staffing needs of the upcoming school year and the uncertainty because of new developments. He advised the committee to just be advised if enrollment projections change over the summer. And number five, tuition reimbursement for non-affiliate employees. This item was discussed previously, and Dr. Hamilton reintroduced it for clarity and direction. It was determined that non-affiliate tuition would be capped, the same as principals, and a separate agreement would be included. This will be infused in the contract language for non-affiliate employees in the school year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tesler. Is there any other reports? Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. We had a curriculum meeting this evening. There were a couple of topics. We didn't get to the full agenda, but we spoke about the co-curricular activities report from both the high school and the middle school. We had a presentation on some of the activities, the attendance. Some very good questions were asked, I believe, during the meeting, and we got some very good information on how these committees, I'm sorry, these clubs are being attended, and how we will continue to keep up with monitoring their attendance and if they're successful or not, and what we intend to do with them if they do not become successful. Additionally, we looked at a change in the way we may be distributing world language at the case... I'm sorry, grades three through five. Currently, we have a Rosetta Stone solution, which is computer-based only. It was presented before the board, that we have a hybrid approach, which would include an updated version of the Rosetta Stone solution, which would be web-based in tandem with introducing world language instructors in the classroom as well to augment the material that is being presented. So we're going to move forward with that as a recommendation from the committee. And we did also adopt AP Physics 1, scientific research and development, and sociology. We never got to miscellaneous.
Anyone else have a report? Mr. Masters?
I'm actually very happy about the Rosetta Stone, because I'm very unhappy about the Rosetta Stone. I didn't have a committee meeting. It was, we had a snow day, which my kids were excited about. But I do have some, an update on the ROD grants, ha, for all you doubting donors out there. One of them got approved, so we just saved about $400,000. They're in the 14-15 budget, so we will see these in the future. Soft costs, right, Mike? The second one, that was the windows and hazardous material abatement. The middle school re-roof should be, right? We're pretty sure that's going to be approved. That's another 600 grand. Tennis courts, really?
Tennis courts are not approved yet.
Okay, that's pending. But that's it. Ha.
Great report. Anyone else have a report? Then we will go to Dr. Hamilton's superintendent's report.
Okay. Before I get into my report, I was actually going to report on the ROD grant, so you just saved about two minutes there. I also want to just clarify a couple of things. I know there's some rumors circulating about changing the school calendar. At this point, there is no recommendation from me to the board to change the school calendar. That, of course, could change depending on the weather, but there is no recommendation before the board to that effect at this time. As for the high school graduation, we're exploring the feasibility of hosting it on-site in the event that an off-site venue is not secured. So I just wanted to go on record for that. I understand there's been some discussion in the community about a calendar change, and that has not been recommended. I'd also like to take this opportunity to extend my heartfelt thanks and appreciation to both Lou and Ira for their outstanding service to the board and to the administration, and for their support in the capacity of Board of Education members. You are... and for their support in the capacity of Board of Education members, your presence, and your contributions will be missed dearly.
Thank you.
Moving on to the superintendent's report. The enrollment report for November and October, November is included in your report, an addition of nine students over the last month, and over eighty-eight student increase from this time last year. There is also a correction from the October report. We were off by one student last month. The enrollment for the out-of-district and homebound instruction is included in your report as well. Your fire drills and lockdowns are enclosed. There have been two conducted at each building in accordance with requirements. And moving on to the personnel report. Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that personnel items A through EE be approved by roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella and Mr. Masters, any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton?
Yes, I have a question on item DD. I'm still a bit confused, and all I'm looking for is just clarification. On the second and third people listed here, it appears to me that they are working the same dates, which is less than a full year, but I don't understand why one is forty-eight percent and the other one is sixty-six percent.
Those are two different positions. One position we are not replacing at a hundred percent, it's a leave position. We're only replacing that one at sixty-six percent. The other portion of the other position is the balance of the one hundred percent. So there's two people filling the one FTE slot.
Those two people that are listed there are filling the same, are filling one slot? Is that what you're telling me?
There are two slots. One is a maternity leave of person who is equivalent to one full-time person.
Okay.
We're only replacing that person at sixty-six percent for the duration of the leave. The other person is the balance of the one hundred percent of the other position.
Okay, I still don't understand it, if they're working the same number of days.
Two different positions.
But aren't they both, or is one position presently not a full-time position?
They're both full, all right. So, a social worker, we have budgeted a social worker at one hundred percent, so that's a one full-time employee. We've previously hired fifty-two percent of that position. This forty-eight percent is the balance of that.
I see, okay.
The other position is a separate leave position for a person who is going out on maternity leave. She's a one hundred percent, one full-time employee. We're only replacing her at sixty-six percent.
Okay, so the first person on the list actually is, along with some other person that was previously hired, they're filling that full-time position?
That is correct.
Okay, fine, I understand it then, thank you.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes, on item CC. Sometimes I like to vote, and there's one or two items in the listing, like on this non-certified staff listing. I would jet to only one person on that list, and there are powers involved here, bus drivers and the webmaster and the mechanic that takes care of the buses. These are all people that take care of kids. Then you have somebody now that's becoming a human, I'm sorry, human resource coordinator. This is a new position. If I feel I don't like that position, and I think it's not needed, I would have to vote against people taking care of our kids.
No, you can, you can vote yes, with the exception of?
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll have a roll call. I'm sorry.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes, on everything but human resource coordinator on CC.
So noted. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovitch?
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through EE passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to board action items. Madam Board President, it is recommended by the superintendent that board action items A through K be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarella, and who was the second? Mr. Preziosso? Comments or questions? Ms. Antellas?
Yes, I'd like to see item K be taken separately.
Second for that. Second, who seconded that? Mr. Chi?
She needs a motion, I'll second it.
I just asked if they, Mr. Chiarella did. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Okay, that motion is carried, that we will do K separately.
So it is recommended by the superintendent that items A through J be approved by roll call vote.
And we have that moved by Mr. Chiarella? And I think Mr. Preziosso seconded.
Okay.
So is there any comments or questions on A through J?
I have a question on J. Just what FM and BM, on behalf of GM, means.
Those are students and their parent, a student and his parents.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Masters?
We kind of glanced upon this I. What is that? I know it's a curriculum, just what is it? What's three-D art?
Three-dimensional art class.
Dr. Corvitz, can you be more specific?
That's how we're going out here.
Mr. Milli, you want to talk about this particular course?
Would you like to know? It's a, it's a three-dimensional art course. That's just, we rewrote the curriculum this past summer. The course has been in existence for a long time.
Okay, does that answer your question?
The curriculum is, the curriculum's in the pending folder.
Yeah.
We deliberated for about two months also on it.
I don't want to get berated anymore.
Any other questions? Then we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellas?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponovitch?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through J passes unanimously.
And I read item K back in for the record?
Yes.
It's recommended by the superintendent that board action item K be approved by roll call vote.
So moved by Mr. Chiarella?
I'd like to make a statement first.
Wait.
We need a second.
I know, Mr. Chiarella, did you make that?
Yeah, that's where we get this.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Mr. Poy.
Mr. Poy. Can't see down there. Okay, comments or questions? Mr. Preziosso?
Wanting this policy for a while, and this is to make sure that we have the assurance of the public that we show them that they could trust us. And this has been a problem for a long time, all over the country. So I think we should put a policy in place where we should have the public's trust and we don't have to worry about what's going to go down in the future. This should have been done a long time ago, instead of voting on it at the last minute.
Mr. Braverman?
If one kid was a pain in the behind in a classroom, and the teacher penalized the whole class, it would be wrong. There might be problems in other communities throughout the state and the country, but so far, there hasn't been a problem here. I don't think anyone can point toward us not abiding by the law. This current, the current policy that we have abides by the law, and it does our due diligence. These changes questions my integrity, as well as the administrators of this district. In my opinion, there is no reason why relatives of former board members should be penalized if they have the proper credentials for the position that they might apply for. So I will be voting no for this revision.
Anyone else? Ms. Antellas?
I have some questions of the attorney. So you've worked with Mr. Preziosso on this policy?
I don't see that as a correct characterization, Ms. Antellas, but I was consulted with, through the board secretary, on the policy. There's going to be a limit to what I can say.
Can I just ask how much time you spent on this?
A period of time was spent. It would be premature for me to discuss that in open sessions, since the material hasn't been finalized. If there are questions that the board wishes to ask with respect to the matter in closed session, specifically with respect to legal advice, I'm happy to do that. But this is not, in my view, the appropriate forum to have that conversation.
So it's not appropriate for the public to know how much money was spent on attorney to review and go over this policy?
I think you know the answer to that question, Ms. Antellas. After the board attorney's bills are forwarded to the board, and they become public documents, that material is available through Oprah.
My next question is, our current policy now does follow the law. This new policy, does this open us up for any kind of litigation? Because we are not following the law that was set by the Department of Education?
I think that you're drawing a conclusion here with respect to the import of the policy, of this proposed policy, and I understand that. This, though, is not the proper forum for me to provide the board with advice with respect to the possibility of litigation. I'd be happy to have the opportunity in closed session to discuss legal advice only with respect to this policy or any other matter that the board deems appropriate.
Well, then let me make a more general question. If the board deviates on any policy away from the law, do we open ourselves up to litigation?
Again, you're asking me to give legal advice in open session, that would be inappropriate. I'm not trying to avoid your question. I think you-
Okay, so how about this? Are there any other Board of Education that have gone beyond the scope of this policy?
I don't have the answer to that question, I can't tell you, I just don't know.
So it sounds like there's a lot of unknowns, so we don't know if there was litigation about this, if it opens us up to litigation. We don't know if other boards have done this. Mr. Gorsky, I had asked a question at the policy meeting about our insurance carrier. Are you able to provide that?
Yes. I spoke to our insurance broker from Board and Pearlman Insurance, and he said that if this policy was successful in its passage, it would not jeopardize any of the district's current insurance policies in place.
And, you know, Ms. Antellas, I can give you some information that might be useful here without, you know, my role, of course, is not to comment on the appropriateness, other than through legal perspective, of whether or not the Board of Education should adopt any policy or take any action. My role is limited, as you know, with respect to the legal piece of all of this. But there is a fundamental doctrine that would permit a public body to require of itself more than the law requires it to do. That doesn't mean that I'm taking a position on this or any other policy. But to, for me to be seen as saying that this is either legal or illegal would not be appropriate. Again-
Well, I'm not really asking if it's legal or illegal, I'm just asking if it opens us up to the possibility of a lawsuit, because we are not staying within the scope of what the Department of Education has mandated.
And I hear, I hear what you're saying. What I'm, what I'm saying is, if you would look at this fundamental premise of the law, which is that a public entity has the ability to provide additional protections, there's protections additional to those that are set forth in a statute. Whether or not the public entity wants to do that is up to the board, but there is the authority to do it.
Okay, well, I think until I have more information about other boards, whether there were litigation involving any kind of nepotism, I can't agree with this policy. Like Mr. Braverman stated, been on this board for over twenty years, never have I seen any administrator or board appoint a board member or their family to a position that they were not qualified for. I think that this policy does put into, I just think it kind of seems like you're saying that the board is going to do this. And I think when you have ten people sitting on a board, watching over, and a superintendent and a business administrator who have the integrity of the people we've had, not just now, but in the past, I just think this is wrong. I don't know why, why, Mr., maybe you can explain, Mr. Preziosso, where this is-
What are you so afraid of? What's, what's the problem?
I just want to know where it's, I'm not afraid of anything, but, you know, over the years, in fact, I ran into the Sidler brothers. I've known them since they're in kindergarten. I've seen so many teachers in our district who were students here, they give so much back to the school. My daughter inclu, actually, both of my daughters included in that. They love this district, they want to do everything they can for it. Why would we penalize them? Just because their parents decided to volunteer their time to try to make a great school district? So I'll be voting no.
Mr. Chiarella?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions with regard to this. My first one is, and it's a statement also, but I don't understand why we were so narrow. I don't, I don't disagree with the, you know, with what this policy is trying to do. I just like to, you know, I just start that off. I don't have any family members who are, you know, who work in the district, or who are teachers, or anything like that, but, so it wouldn't apply to me or my family. But I want to know why board members were left off of this, because it's not okay to hire a family member of a board member, but yet a board member could walk off this board and then get a job. So I'd like, I'd like to see that looked at again, so, you know, for that reason, I think we should look at it. The other thing is, too, is that there have been a lot of things that have gone back and forth. I've heard various board members who have family members who work for the district called part-time board members, because they can't participate in negotiations. Now, the way I read this policy, it states that any, anyone who has a relative that's a teacher in the state would be barred from negotiating, barred from the negotiations committee. Is that correct?
By? And for point of clarification, Mr. Chiarella, according to this policy, a board member would also be restricted from getting a job in this district for a year, and-
I just don't see that in the policy, though. I don't see where it says a board member.
As a matter of law, Mr. Chiarella, as a matter of law, a former board member can't be employed by a Board of Education for a period of six months. This is, this policy, as I understand it, is seeking to extend that. But again, I make no comment on the value of the policy, or the merit of the policy, but rather its construction. But you asked the question about whether or not someone who has a relative and a member, let me paraphrase what I think was the question, you'll correct me if I get it wrong, who is a, who has a relative, a close, a member of an immediate family or other relative recognized as such under the School Ethics Act, to participate in negotiations with a labor unit if that person's relative is defined in the statute as a member of the same statewide union. Is that the question?
Yes.
Yeah, you can't, under the construction of the School Ethics Act articulated by the School Ethics Commission, that person would not be able to participate at the table in negotiations. What that person can do, again, if it's, if it's not the local unit, but rather the same statewide union, that person can vote on the memorandum of agreement, but not get information about that memorandum of agreement until the evening or day, when the Board of Education is going to be asked to vote on the particular contract. And again, that comes from our School Ethics Commission.
Okay. We mentioned earlier, I know there were some comments made about tabling, you know, tabling the MTAA contract, and so that a new board could look at it. I, I'm not comfortable voting on this until I could see those stipulations. I, Madam President, I'm looking, you know, I'm reading the, I'm reading this, and I don't, and I don't see where it specifically says a board member cannot have a job here. So I would like that added, and I think that this should be tabled, so that we could discuss this in policy further, and then come back to the board with a comprehensive policy that I could vote on.
Are you making a motion to table?
I'm making a motion to table, yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Ms. Antellas? This is a roll call. Is there any comments or questions in regard to tabling? If not, then we'll take a roll, Mr. Kaufman?
Then here tonight, that's closing the discussion on this.
Yes, it would be...
There's something I wanted to say, and if I agreed to the tabling, then I can't say anything.
You just changed the...
Is that true? Oh, well, then speak now.
Or forever hold your peace.
Yes.
So, real quickly, I won't take long. Mr. Preziosso, does this policy that we have been handed represent what you're looking for?
Right now, it does, yes.
Right now, it does. So what does that mean?
It took me a year just to get this to this board.
So it took you a year to get a couple of lines in?
No. This is what... This policy includes board members and family members of the board, and up to a year.
Okay, so when before this meeting did the idea or the discussion of board members who are no longer on the board come up in the Policy Committee meeting? When did that happen before?
You questioning me? Is this a point of order?
He can ask you a question.
Sure.
And what would you like to know?
Okay, I'll say it again. When before the last policy meeting?
Mr. Kaufman, could you please use your microphone and maybe we'd hear better?
When before the last policy meeting did this topic of former board members and the year delay before one of their family members can apply for a position? When did that come up?
Quite a while ago.
Quite a while ago, specifically?
I don't remember the times.
Okay, you don't remember. So...
Is there a problem with this?
I'll get to it. Well, yeah, I got a couple of things written on it. So I would agree with some of the other things that were mentioned here before. One of the concerns I have specifically is in the beginning section. We talk about board members and the superintendent. So I want to make sure that, you know, as you said before, this represents basically what you're looking for now. You're okay with an assistant superintendent or any of the principals to have somebody hired because that falls outside the scope of what's named up here?
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next question is...
It'll be tabled.
I don't know what that means, but the second item in here on the paragraph where it starts, "No relative of a board member or superintendent", there's a second item in here. And I want to make sure, because you said this represents exactly what you want or close to it. And I'm really reading it in depth this time, too. Can somebody explain how this is okay? Please bear with me. This is exclusionary of... This prohibition shall not apply with respect to the hiring of the superintendent of schools such that a candidate for this... For the position of superintendent of schools shall not be disqualified from holding the position of superintendent of schools because his or her relative is employed by the Board of Education, by the board, on the date he or she becomes superintendent. Because if you're going to relook at this, I don't know how this ever got in here because as soon as they got hired, then they would be an exclusion of the policy. That doesn't make sense to me at all. So I would tend to agree with the idea of taking a look at this again because this really is not representative of... If you're doing a nepotism policy, as was mentioned earlier, I think we really need to see what other districts are putting in their nepotism policy because I don't think it would be in our best interest to go over or below because of some of the things that were mentioned here previously. But clearly, this needs work, I think, and... These are just some of the things that I just thought of.
So are there any other comments or questions before we decide to table?
Well, I have some comments. I don't know if they are relative to the tabling motion, but they're relative to this discussion.
We table, the comments are over.
Excuse me?
Once we table, we can't go back to the original motion. Right?
So can I comment now?
Yes.
Okay. Madam President, I have a couple of comments. And one is that I believe that much of the policy that we're looking at, much of that policy is the original mandated policy of the state. And I can't say this for certain, but possibly Ms. Lorty could clarify this. I think the matter that was raised about the superintendent, a superintendent being hired, if there were a relative in the district already employed, I think that's actually discussed in the state's policy. That is not part of this revision. That's always been there. That's part of the policy we've had in the past, if I'm not mistaken. The other point I want to make is we adopt and revise policies all the time. We almost do it every month. And yet I have never heard our being concerned about litigation. Every policy that a board has, litigation can be brought up on it if a parent wants to so do that. I don't see that that's a valid reason in considering the adoption of a policy or the revision of a policy. A great concern about litigation. Of course, you know, you're going to turn to your board's attorney for their advice on that. But what amazes me is that the question never arose on any of the other policies that we've adopted since I've been on the board or since I've been attending board meetings for three or four years. So that concerns me. The other point that I want to make is, we had a policy, and I think the revision was an attempt to strengthen that policy, to make it stronger. And yet, some of the comments that I've heard appear to be comments, you know, that don't want to make it a stronger policy, a better policy. So those are my comments on this. I just want to add them because everybody else is commenting, but those are my comments about this. Some of these things I've heard just don't quite seem reasonable to me. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Masters? There was a policy for IAQ that we did discuss, possible litigation, when we were talking about removing IAQs and stuff like that. You might not have been on the board yet, but that's one I remember because it's the air quality and it's one of the things that was on my nice little plaque. That's what I get. So just before we table, because I'm really confused with what Tom said before, and I did say that I was wondering if this was a reaction to something because I'm not on policy, I'm the alternate. So I was coming in kind of blind. Not blind, but I have to catch up real fast. So when I was trying, and I'm still confused, that's why. When I was trying to get, I guess, what was going on with this policy, which is what I asked with most of them, and I was told a parent... And this is what happened. A sub, an ad hoc Subcommittee on Nepotism was formed, and Vi either helped rewrite or rewrote the nepotism policy to make it stronger, which is fine. And again, this is why I'm a little confused. I was also, and this was discussed at policy, that it was originally a three-year, but I think you had determined that would have been overly discriminatory?
Mr. Masters, I think it's appropriate to have this conversation in open session.
Okay.
I cannot comment on any advice that was given to the board, and my... The absence of my comment should not be understood by anyone to mean I either gave or did not give that advice.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no more questions, then we will have a roll call to table this policy and bring it back to the Policy Committee.
This is a motion to table the revisions to the nepotism policy. Motion was made by Mr. Chiarella, seconded by Ms. Antellus. Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Braverman, you're voting no to table. So noted. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
No.
Mr. Preziosso?
No.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion to table passes. That concludes the discussion on the nepotism policy.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and I guess that concludes your report.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
And we will go to the Business Administrator's Report. Mr. Gorski?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through N be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Mr. Masters?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tesler. Comments or questions for Mr. Gorski? Seeing none, we will have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus? Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosso?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through N passes. And if I have a moment, please, I would like to acknowledge, from my perspective as Business Administrator Board Secretary, that it's been my pleasure and privilege to work with Mr. Tesler and Mr. Masters over the years. I've worked longer with Mr. Tesler, going back about 12 years with the work that he generously contributed to the Monroe Education Foundation and through his alternate on the Finance Committee. He's a very generous, big-hearted individual who is very intelligent and offers very good solutions on difficult problems. And Mr. Masters also, through our collaboration on building grounds and transportation, has made the district's facilities safer and better for students. So I will miss the both of these. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, Board President's report is going to be very, very short. Ira and I would like to wish everybody a very happy holiday, a wonderful winter break, and the best for good health and happiness in 2014. Other Board of Education business, is there anybody who would like Mr. Chiarella?
Yes. I just wanted to take this opportunity just to talk a moment about our policy with regards to how we award our students, whether they be in football or band or whatever. And I know this is a hot topic tonight, but I had planned to make this, just to talk about this. I really think that we really need to revise our policies and take a look at this so that all of our children are treated fairly and equitably and the same. Football or baseball or cheerleading doesn't have anything up on band, for instance, and I'm only bringing that up because this is before us today. But I really think we need to look at that. I don't even know how we came up with policies that have different designations for different groups. But I think if we're talking about being open and honest and fair, then we also need to show our students that we're going to be open, honest, and fair. So I don't know what that means or what that would look like, but I'm just imploring the board to just go back, look at these, and come up with policies that make sense but treat everyone equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, sure. I also wanted to dovetail on what Ken was saying about the policy for the marching band, as it relates to the marching bands specifically. I also took a look at the policy when it was shared with the board on the way it sits. And this is another example of a pre-existing policy that really needs to be taken a look at. The fact that we disseminate different types of sporting events by category is really not the honorable way to do things. You know, take out the designation for each individual sport, roll it up to the common denominator, call it a day, and let's go home. The next point I wanted to bring up is, this is our last meeting before the reorg. Did it last year. I would like to know, from my own personal edification, who is planning to run for president?
It's not me.
I was thinking about it.
Shut up. Do we have a show of hands? Is anybody planning to run for president in January? Ms. Kolopanowicz? Anybody else?
Mr. Zarneski?
Other than Mr. Se... So that's it. Does Kathy? Anybody planning to run for vice president? Again, you two, you're killing me.
Anyone else?
Again?
Not me. I tried.
So nothing? Bueller? Bueller? Okay. Okay, that's it.
Is there any other business from any member of the Board of Education?
Couple of comments, Madam President. And I make this comment because in the past, I think before I became a board member, possibly even after I became a board member, I questioned the expenditure on Challenge Day. This was an event, a three-day event at the high school where we had to bring in people from California. We had to pay for their airfare, and we had to pay for the fee. So when I... When the board was invited to participate in Challenge Day, I said, "Since I have questioned it, then I have to actually go and see what it's all about." Dr. Gorman warned me that if I was going to do it, I needed to participate for a full day because it's a full-day activity. So since I'm retired, I can afford to do that. And so I spent last Friday in the auxiliary gym of Monroe Township High School with about 120 to 130 grade nine through grade 12 students, along with some of the teachers that had volunteered to participate in this activity. And essentially...
Board members together, if Lisa's here, don't have one brain cell between them. That's my, above all, favorite derogatory comment that's ever been said about us. So yeah, I really don't care, but don't you dare disparage my wife. And I'm hearing a lot of negative stuff. And I'm hearing a lot of negative stuff. I don't stand for it. I don't care about me, you can say whatever you want about me. She worked way too hard on what she does with the special ed kids, to deserve what's being said about her in town. If you have a problem with me, yes, Nelson, you're going to start over talking to me like you do on everything, you've been doing that for the last three meetings. And I'm kind of sick of it. I have the floor, okay? With your harassment.
Are you talking about me?
Yeah, talking about you.
Excuse me? Mr. Masters has...
I'm sorry.
Miss...
Your mom...
Excuse me! Excuse me! I'm asking you to, I'm asking you to please be quiet. Mr. Master has the floor. Master, ma... Mr. Masters?
No, I'm not done, actually. I'm waiting for you.
Gentlemen.
Lou?
So, it belittles you, I'm just telling you, I'm giving you some advice when you do stuff like that. It littles you, it casts a dark shadow over you, and if you're trying to get something across, something that's very good, the nepotism policy, I don't really have a problem with it. But when you start bringing in personalities, and people's family members, and children, and stuff like that, this is what happens. Okay? So again, if you have a problem with me, I don't care, come talk to me. Just don't you dare disparage my wife, or my family. I'm done.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Antellus?
On a different subject, I'd like to talk about the high school graduation. Quite a few years ago, we were out at the football field, up on the stage, Kathy and I handing out diplomas, when a big black cloud came out of nowhere, opened up on everybody, pouring rain. That graduation was ruined for those students, and it was ruined for their parents. To have it inside of our new high school, that means people are sitting on the bleachers with no backs. I wouldn't want my grandmother sitting on the bleachers, much less having to climb up them, high heels on the gym floor. This is not the venue for graduation. Graduation from high school only happens to a student once. We should make it the best it can be for them. Not just for them, for their parents, for their grandparents, their brothers, their sisters. Having it inside starts to mean tickets, people get angry. We need a different venue. And I would urge Dr. Hamilton and the board to really look for a facility that can fit a lot of people and not this high school.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Here we go. The closed session resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education, of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: personnel matters to receive attorney advice in regards to the proposed labor contract with the MTEAA, sexual student matters, harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents 14 through 22. The discussion conducted in closed session can be discussed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. I need a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Masters, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And at this time, the board will move into closed session. Which will be where?
Mike, where is it?
Going to media center? How long? How long?
The Township Administrators Association for the period of July 1st, 2014, through July 30th, 2017, MOA. The Board President and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to sign a collective negotiation incorporating the terms of the MOA. Additionally, the Business Administrator, Board Secretary is hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement the action of the Board of Education, dated December 18th, 2013.
Sarah Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Masters. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we will have a roll call, Mr. Gorsky?
Yes. Ms. Antellus? She's recused. Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
As a matter of statute, the receiving district is not eligible to vote on this. Mr. Kaufman?
Recused.
Number recused, okay. Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Prezioso?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, collective negotiations agreement with the Monroe Township Administrators Association passes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will go to the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Brian Hackett, 3 Avenue D. I know it's getting...
We will adhere to our three-minute time limit.
Yes. I know it's getting late, but there was an important issue that I wanted to bring up to the board and confirm whether it was true or not. I'm active in the community, and a couple parents had talked to me about something going on, whether it was in Apple Garth or Oak Tree or both, I'm not sure. But one of them said it may have come from the principal or the PTA, something about Merry Christmas and holiday parties are not being observed or allowed anymore.
Fortunately, we have the principal of Apple Garth here this evening. Mr. Ventrello, are you okay with, I know I'm putting you on the spot, if you could address that?
You know, just people say things, and before I comment, I'd like to know what was true.
You should just be aware of the fact that Apple Garth and Oak Tree School is...
Mr. Ventrello, could you please come to the microphone?
Thank you.
What we had is that, we have, you know, obviously, a lot of diversity on our side of town between Oak Tree and Apple Garth School. There has to be a recognition of the numbers of kids that come from different religious backgrounds. As we do that, I think the board, certainly through the curriculum and through their own recognition, et cetera, is that there's always that acknowledgement and recognition that there are so many people, so many different religions, et cetera. There's no, no religion is being barred. This was a case as far as, well, what do you call the holiday party? Now, with so many different backgrounds, religions, religions and ethnic groups, cultures, et cetera, the safe way to go, obviously, has always been for public education anyway, has been basically just to say, winter break, winter party, et cetera. We actually say holiday. Decision of mine, as I was confronted by a couple of parents, as a matter of fact, was that, was there a religious affiliation through the word holiday? I assured the parents that there was not, but obviously, these parents are not of the Christian persuasion, they're not of the Jewish persuasion, and they have their holidays as well, too. But they wanted to know if their children would participate in this particular holiday party, is there, somehow there's a religious affiliation. I assured them there was not. Little by little, though, is that, you know, through feedback with parents, et cetera, and communication, is that I went back from winter break, we changed it back to winter holiday, which I thought was a compromise. But somehow, that got perceived as that... They're red and green. Kids were obviously, they were not allowed to say Merry Christmas. So just a lot of absurdities that were being passed around. It's like playing telephone, like we do when we're kids. By the time you got it, by the time you got your information, I hate to say, but it was completely absurd and incorrect. So feel free, if you want to have this conversation another time, but obviously, is that all of the religions are recognized here in Monroe, the curriculum recognizes it, we don't teach to one religion, but we do teach a lot about all the religions, is what we do. All the kids can say Merry Christmas, they can say Happy Hanukkah, they can say Happy Ramadan, whatever they want to say, they can say that. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Great, you're welcome. Okay.
To say, with my experience growing up in the town, born and raised here, going through all the schools all my life, I remember Hanukkah recognitions and Christmas celebrations, and a teacher or a class or a school didn't refrain from calling something a Christmas party, or having an event of that sort. Everybody kind of just respected it. And even calling it a winter break or winter celebration, I think, you know, it's a point of hypersensitivity or political correctness that I think we could really do without. And I think speaking about Merry Christmas or Happy Hanukkah, it enriched my experience as a student, having my class Christmas party. The teacher called it a Christmas party, people didn't get offended. And I recognize a diversity that's coming into the town, so let's recognize their holidays, too. I mean, it's really, I just think this hyper sensitivity and political correctness is toxic and dangerous, because it goes to the point where we're not recognizing some for the sake of not offending and walking on eggshells for others. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Richard Gibbons, 415 Schoolhouse Road. I'm going to say something similar to what Brian had said, and I was at the policy meeting on Monday night, and it seemed like the board was very meticulous about adhering to state policy in regards to nepotism, the health situation, school property being rented out, teacher evaluations, even to the point, excuse me, where one of the ladies had said, you know, we have to be very careful that we're not open to lawsuits. And Mr. Poy, to his credit, had even brought up the words "may" and "shall" to try to clarify some of that. He said, maybe we should clarify some of the language, which is good. But then, when you get down, and I had heard about this, this calling these parties, winter parties, at church on Sunday morning, apparently, somebody had emailed the pastor, and so that's how I had heard about it. And I don't think it's, I think the board should really notify the schools and say, you should change this back to Christmas parties, because after all, it is Christmas time. And I think that if the board or the schools are going to make policy based on people, how people are offended or insulted, I think that's a bad way to make policy, because when you're doing other policy, you base it on state law. Because if we're going to make policy based on how people are offended, well, guess what? Every time I get my tax bill and I see the school tax, I'm highly offended. So therefore, maybe craft a letter tonight and just say that going in the future, we won't be raising the school taxes, because I'm highly offended. So I don't think that, but I don't think that's a good way to go. I think you should base it on the Constitution, which says, we have freedom of religion, not freedom from religion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Klein, 7 Crenshaw Court. Lou, Ira, it was a pleasure working with you in my term on the board. You gave your all, you did your best, and there's always another year. As far as Lou Masters, I got to say, you did a fabulous, fabulous job going to the meetings at Middlesex County Education Services Commission. You at least attended the meetings. Your predecessor did not. She was at perhaps one or two meetings, and that comes right from the head. The $2 million grant, in the newspaper, there was grant money that we're receiving for 2-point-something million, where is he? There he is. 2-point-something million to go towards improvements. So as I complained about the three years that I was on the board and even after the board, is, we have to get grant money, we have to get grant money, we got to get grant money. Don't answer anything until I finish, because she's going to keep me to three minutes, and that doesn't count, because I had to explain. So that's a start, but Old Bridge again wound up getting almost $5 million. We have, what, three schools that need roofs, we got Apple Garth that needs a furnace, amongst other work, expansions, expansion in this school, something at the high school. As far as the parents who complained about board members being either without children in the schools, I served on the board. Those of you that followed me...
Mr. Klein?
I treated it as if it was my own children. I voted as if it was my own children. So by saying that you have to have members on the board that have children, that's ridiculous. Also, to the parents, you have two big developments. One's got preliminary approval, one is now in the courts, because it was turned down. One is 500 condo and apartments, the other is 700, the marketplace, 749 condos and apartments. If you... It's over 1,000 kids in this school district, which is already overcrowded now. Tuition reimbursement, this came up two years ago, about tuition... I spoke about it while I was on the board, there was supposed to be a rule, or whatever you want to call it, to cover that. Now it's two years later. The horse is out of the barn. You spent, I think it was $70,000, well above anything we ever paid. So yeah, it's two years late, but the horse is gone. As far as Michael Klein, Michael Klein was at the end, he was number 12, he received 900 votes. So your fellow sister on the board who pushed him took votes away from both of you, because I guarantee, I'm not blowing my own horn, I guarantee you, the bulk of the 900 thought it was Mark Klein. So your member shot you both down. Lastly...
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Lastly...
I'm sorry.
I sold my home, no, I'm done. I sold my home, because I got, I'm getting taxed out of my home.
Okay, thank you.
So I sold the house, I moved into a smaller house with half the taxes, and I thank you very much, and I wish everybody here a happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
A Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
I know, it's...
I'm Joe Homolke, 61 Hoffman Road. Ira and Lou, I spent 12 years on the board, I know how you feel, okay? I'd like to congratulate Tom, Michelle, and Lou for being elected to the board. But what I want to say is, I spent 12 years on the board, four years as president, and it made no difference whether somebody had children or not in the school. During my 12 years, I had Amy, who's not here right now, Marvin was there, Kathy was there, Lou was there, and Ira. And every time we made decisions, it was always in the best interest of the kids. And I'm confident that's the way it's been, and that's the way it's going to be in the future. So all I can say is, it's not an issue to be debated, because when board members become board members, they all are there for a reason, and they're all trying to do their best for the kids that we have in Monroe Township. And again, I wish everybody a very nice holiday, Christmas, and whatever you celebrate.
Thank you, Mr. Homolke. Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public forum. Our next scheduled public Board of Education meeting, which is our reorganization meeting, Thursday, January 2nd, 2014, 7 o'clock PM at the high school. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Tesler? Who would like to be second? Mr. Masters?